Okay, we'll move forward then with our public comment portion of this meeting. We have four speakers who signed up to speak. First is Frank Rader from Mooresville, speaking about Our Schools First.
I don't know if I should say this, but I drove up here in a truck with 155,000 miles on it, so it may be a target. Welcome, Our Schools First, which is the name we're using since I last spoke with you, is up and running. We have in excess of $50,000 in the bank in hand. We have received today our initial order of yard signs. We have stickers that we were handing out at the Idaho County Fair. We have other literature out, time reserved for spots on media and space. So, we meet twice a week in various forums, about 11 of us at a time, and that's been expanding. So, we are delighted with the response that we're receiving all over the county. We're going to be getting our message out all over the county. I think the biggest error we could make right now is to rush it out too soon and lose all our energy. We want to make sure that we've got plenty of energy for the final push to the election. But as you know, absentee balloting is going on as we speak, and it's not that long before we get one-stop balloting going on, so we want to cover all those places. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If you'd like to see financial reports, we provide those to your chairman and to your superintendent, and he can disperse them, and we can update those at any time. Thank you much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Scott Clontz, speaking about North Carolina laws.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Last November, I was privileged to sit down on an Ed Matters meeting, and I think that the majority of our parental public misses the opportunity to hear the administration talk about the initiatives in the school system. I would like to hope that we can encourage both the schools, administrations, the principals, the teachers, encourage folks to come to those meetings. The interesting thing was, last fall, that Mr. Johnson presented to some teachers at South Idaho about pay and contracts, and Preston Spencer evidently struck a nerve in some situations. But one of the things that Mr. Johnson respectfully brought up in that meeting, when some teachers asked about, and I want to make sure I'm clear, I believe it's Ms. Erica Turner that was hired as an AP at Statesville Senior High School, he pointed out to these educators that had been in the classroom dealing with our kids for many years, that that hire was based on the fact that, and I can't quote him because I can't remember the words exactly, but somewhere along the lines of paraphrasing, that, "You know that Statesville Senior High School is a bird of a different color." If I'd had dentures, I probably would have dropped them that night. I don't think any of our high schools are birds of any different colors or colored at all. Respectfully so, this administration has chose to move that administrator to Statesville Middle School, and I recognize and respect their choices of moving administrators around. But in one year's time, did that bird of a different color change? If it was so important to bring Ms. Turner into that position, have we changed our environment so much that we moved her to Statesville Middle School? And if that's the proper place for her to be, I'm fine with that also. But have we replaced her and the AP that has retired at Statesville Senior High School with two APs who are going to be earning more than $80,000 a year like she was? If we talk about equity to our system, if we talk about equity to our schools, if we talk about equity to our children, it's probably the way it should be. Last week, Mr. Kelly referred to the fact that the school board only hires one employee. And I think in Mr. Kelly's 10-year term, that he's been told that so many times that he believes it. And during that meeting, I was able, through the great technology that we have available to us today, to pull up General Statute 115(c)(278), which actually refutes the fact that only the school board only hires the superintendent. Local boards of education may, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, elect assistant or associate superintendents. That's paragraph two. Paragraph one is, "Local boards of education shall have the authority to employ an assistant superintendent." I don't think we ought to be in the position of deferring to just the superintendent's role. He is the CEO. He does run this operation on a day-to-day basis, and we appreciate that fact. But you, Mr. Kelly, and the rest of you seven board members were elected by your constituents, your neighbors, your fellow congregation members, your members of your civics clubs, to represent them in your relationship to Mr. Johnson. Last thing I'll bring up, and I was able, thank you, Mr. Cash for allowing, Dr. Cash for allowing me to bring up last week, the MASH curriculum. I'm appalled that an administrator in the school system would attempt to pimp our seventh and eighth grade students out on a pilot program because we're given free curriculum and free iPads for our seventh and eighth grade health programs, when that administrator should have known that this would be a highly, highly controversial and/or observed program. And I hold Ms. Rogers to her word that I'll be able to see that curriculum, and I would like to hold you guys to your responsibility to make sure that this is a program that, going forward, should be presented to our seventh and eighth graders. I appreciate the hard work you do. I know it's not easy. Work a little harder. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mary Sloan regarding the health program. They may come in tandem, it looks like, Mary Ann Sloan.
Thank you for changing the public comments so that I could have my say in this. I was out of town last week, and from comments I heard from my pastor and people in my church, I felt like I needed to speak on it tonight. And they would be here, but they're at the Seven Project tonight. Members of the school board, Superintendent Johnson and staff, I came tonight as a lifetime resident in Iroquois County, mother of four grown sons, grandmother of six, three of whom are currently in the school system. I am also a Christian and a taxpayer. I never thought I would have to speak about a sexual health class. Yes, the times are changing. Values and common sense have gone by the wayside. However, the one thing that never changes is the truth of God's Word. It is still how we Christians measure or determine the right course of action. At first glance, this proposed course looks okay, but Satan always paints a pretty picture. Then you dig into the program of show and tell in the videos that I was told about and realize this is very wrong. This is not a safe choice and certainly not a proud choice. When you look at how the students are taught how to protect themselves, in essence, you are willfully, with much planning and forethought, teaching them how to commit the sin of fornication. Do you know how many scriptures condemn this sin and warn against it? 1 Thessalonians 4:3, 1 Corinthians 5:1, 6:13, 6:18, Acts 15:20, Romans, and plus others in the Old Testament. When you, as adults, put your stamp of approval on this program, students will decide it must be okay if our leaders voted to present it to us. After all, aren't they responsible for the good of the children? How many times over the years have I heard that statement from administrators? It's all about the kids. It's overused. Most time, the kids are the last persons to benefit. This leads me to ask what's in it for Ms. Rogers, for the administration, for Iroquois County school system? Oh, we have another grant, but that doesn't mean it's for the best. As I understand, nothing was to be taught until the school board voted on it, yet Ms. Rogers began to instruct ninth-grade teachers in July. Do you understand why we don't trust the administration? You broke the rules. Aren't you supposed to lead by example? You say the morning-after pill is a contraceptive. Another misconception. It is an abortion pill. Will you be handing out these pills to our girls, and will their parents know if their daughters are getting them? As a pro-life voter, I object to this, and as a taxpayer, I object. All that being said, you have no right to impose your morality or lack thereof on the precious children that God has given us. That responsibility lies with the parents. Ephesians 6:4 charges parents to bring up their children in the nurture and admonition of God. It doesn't say it is up to the schools. I believe God honors parents when they are obedient to Him. The school system, in my opinion, is trying to be all things to all people, just like our government. You need to stick to education, science, math, reading, and so forth, and let parents be parents in personal and private matters. You say parents won't teach their children. Then design a class for parents that they should have to attend before giving permission to their students to participate. Warn them about the explicit things you will be teaching their children, and be truthful about it, videos and all. The newspaper articles seem to conclude that since the removal of the abstinence-only curriculum and the adoption of the Healthy Youth Act, teen pregnancies have declined. Could it possibly be attributed to a very good program in our Iroquois County schools called the Truth Girls, an abstinence program by Pregnancy Resource Center, and other such programs? You may think your program presents a safe choice, but consider the enormous number of STDs one can get and pass on to the other partners for life, the promiscuity it promotes, the pressure and/or the guilt from students. If you justify this program because ninth graders, who can't even drive yet, can make a good decision, compare this to taking drugs. Will you then institute a program to give our kids clean needles so they will be safe when they shoot up? Proverbs 14:12, "There is a way which seems right unto a man, but the end thereof are the ways of death." I believe it boils down to whether you believe God's Word or not. I am making a proud choice to believe the Bible. Right now, tonight, the Seven Project is underway at North Iroquois High School, with Christian people helping students to make the right choices according to God's Word. Tuesday and Wednesday, we will be at West Iroquois and Statesville High Schools. In a world where good character and morality are spiraling downward, I am asking you, the school board, to use your God-given abilities and consciences to discern right from wrong. I guess we will find out where your allegiance lies. I implore you to obey God and leave all the consequences of the circumstances to Him. Vote no to this program. Thank you.
That concludes our list of speakers who've signed to speak. I'll ask, are there any other members of the audience who wish to speak to the board?
I apologize, I didn't sign up because I figured it was coming at the end, and figured it would really do no good. But my name is Chrissy Boring. Y'all probably know me, I know. I just want to say that Making Proud Choices, or the new alternative name for the task force, no matter what you decide to do tonight, I hope the public understands that it is North Carolina law that this stuff is taught. Anything in there has to be taught. So, we really need to take this argument above the school board if we want something to change. But I hope the public also knows that we have done everything that we can to make this more appropriate, more age-relatable, more speaking of more abstinence, and editing some of those horrible videos, and even throwing some out. I don't know what else we could really do without just tossing it out the window and telling the teachers good luck. I learned a lot while participating on this task force. I was very opposed to this curriculum before this task force started. I just think that if they do have a script to follow, it might, in some way, reach some student out there who doesn't have a parent at home who chooses to teach their kids, as I choose to teach mine, at home, even if she does take this class next year or if she doesn't. And I don't know, because the decision has not been made at my house. But the fact of the matter is, they've got to be taught the information because it's North Carolina state law. So, basically, we got to come to a decision. Is it a scripted curriculum, or are we going to throw the help teachers at these high schools out there and say, "Good luck"? I really do feel that every member of this task force has taken the time and the effort and done the best that we can to make this an appropriate curriculum of some sort. And, you know, we don't even know if it would pass the approval of the people who have to approve our changes, if you do approve it to send there. But I do urge you to consider it. I really do believe that we've done the best that we can, and I thought hard, and I had to come to agreement at some points and give in, but I wanted to, you know, just let y'all know that I really do think that we did a good job when it was all said and done. And I want the public to know that I'm still not a 100% supporter because it's not abstinence-only, but it is better than what it was. So, thanks for the time, I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Doug Holland. I also was a member of the task force, and I would just like to say that, like Christie, I did learn a lot. Is this program a better program today, what we're presenting to you? Yes, it is. A lot of things were taken out of it. But I do have a lot of concerns with what's left in it. There are some things that I very adamantly oppose, and I think this board should consider this program very carefully before you approve it. I would also remind some of you, Ms. Bonham, you were one of those who said that you cannot support a task force unless we were able to look at other options. We were not able to look at other options. In fact, we were given instructions from the school system to look at only how to make Making Proud Choices work. I think there are better programs out there, and I think we're selling our students, our kids, short by not considering those other options. There are other organizations here in the county. Cost was a concern. There are organizations here in the county who will volunteer to teach other programs at no cost to this county, and I think you need to consider those. There are absence-based programs that work, and I strongly urge you to consider this before you vote. Take your time. We don't have to vote on it tonight. There are other programs out there that will address our concerns better, and I think we need to look at those. And we're selling our shelves short by not considering those other options. Thank you for your time.
Are we going to get the opportunity to present to you guys again?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Any other speakers?
I'm Susan Johnson, and I'm one of the school nurses. There are 17 of us, and our lead nurses here are supporting me tonight and as a representative. We do believe in a reproductive health curriculum. Several of our nurses are teachers of it. I've told you before that we're out there on the front lines. I did call around today, got in touch with all the school nurses from the high schools, because, again, it really is about the students. I know a lot of people say that, but it seems to get brushed under the rug. It has become so political. We have 20 pregnant in our district right now. We had three that dropped over the summer. I did not include those in the numbers. I don't know where they are, but we do have 20 pregnant. A lot of those are new pregnancies. I told you that we would, that those numbers would continue to climb, as they do every fall, and that's happened. So, I urge you to think about what we need to do. Something needs to be done. Yes, this curriculum has proven itself to be effective, and what we've come up with is on the very conservative side, and every single one of us out there are conservative thinkers. Probably, on the conservative side, we go from a seven to a 10, from seven being, you know, on the conservative side, to 10 being extremely conservative. And we did take every single word and look at it. And those of us who stuck with the task force to the very end and communicated with each other did come to an agreement and, you know, wanted to present it to you and would like to present it again tonight. I'm concerned about what we saw in the paper, the article in the paper. It was a screenshot of the part of the video that we told everyone in the meeting, the Cal meeting last week, was no longer a part of it. That concerns me. And then there was some language that we took out that wasn't mentioned last week that was in the paper, mutual masturbation. We took that out. We were all disgusted to put that in there. We didn't want that in there. Again, for those of you who were not in that meeting last week, the biggest thing that we were trying to do is to find something that was addressing all 14-year-olds. Your 14-year-olds who have a two-parent home, who are taken to church and have parents who are involved, and we'll talk with them, or your 14-year-olds who don't have anyone at home. And like I said last week, once we all were able to come together with that, we were able to work together as a team, as a task force, which was what you asked us to do. So, I ask that you take what we've given you and give it your consideration, because we've got to do something. I mean, you know, like I said, I will go back in my office and you will see me no more. I'm not a political person. I don't like this whole arena, but I'm here because I care, and that's it. I don't like the attention it brings me at all.
Do we have one more speaker?
Well, I'll be honest, I had not planned on speaking tonight, but this is something that I feel I'm opposed to, this Making Proud Choices. I do want to thank those that served on the task force to try to make better choices for those students. But the problem that I still have is that the school system seems to be using children, my children, everyone else that has children within the school system, as guinea pigs and testing through these pilot programs in order for you all to attain apparently funding through grants. You know, I'm opposed to your decisions as far as certain policies. I know I have other issues that I'd need to address with Mr. Johnson, and I probably will be addressing those as well to the board, as far as certain policies go. But for this matter at hand, just take into consideration, when you make your decision based on the program, I wish you would at least look at other options. And of course, that was not instilled, apparently, so I'm a little upset that they're not given other options. So, thank you for your time.
Please, one more hand.
My name is Ronnie Wooton, and I also was a member of the task force and came tonight with no intention of speaking either. But since we have moved it to where it is, I did want to say a few things about what's been done on the task force. I was pleasantly surprised at how well the task force worked together. We, everything that you've heard said tonight is true from the task force members. I understand the concerns that's been brought by the other parents. I had those same concerns myself. As you know, I spoke against Making Proud Choices many times before the task force was formed. I think that the product that we have now is acceptable for what it is. I think that there could be better choices out there if we were allowed to look at those choices. So, if we vote tonight to implement the new curriculum, as it's been revised by the task force, I hope that you'll leave the door open to maybe in the future looking at a different curriculum, one that would be even better suited. But what's been done is a good product. I'm proud of it. I'm proud of these task force members. I got to know Ms. Johnson, and I certainly appreciate her and what she's done and what she does for our students every day. I'm very concerned, though, about these things that continue. It seems like we're on the back end of the corrections. We had a task force to revise the Making Proud Choices, and now this MASH program's been brought to us. I don't know where we are on implementing it, because I've just now heard about it in the past few days and looked at it a little bit. I'm more concerned about how we choose the curriculum, and I think there needs to be more oversight than just maybe one person bringing these things in. And just because something says that it's a grant and free money doesn't mean that it's free. You get what you pay for. And I'm really concerned that we've never seen a grant that we don't like. I'm really concerned that every time something's dangled out there, we're ready to grab it and be a guinea pig. But I think that what you have before you is a well-defined curriculum that's been done by this task force, and I think that it's acceptable the way it is for now, if that's the choice that we have to make. But I think there are better choices out there. So, I'll leave you with that, and thank you for your time.
Do you have any other speakers? Thank you all for your public comment to us. Again, we value your opinions and your judgments, and we know that these were more informed, more informed opinions and judgments, especially by those who have served on the task force. We'll get ready to hear, as we go into our non-consent agenda, the report from the Reproductive Health and Safety Task Force. And as you notice on the agenda, it is a voting item. Before we hear their presentation, I want to clarify, and in my clarification, include this as a question to Ms. Rogers and probably Dr. Taylor, as our Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, to make sure that our board understands and that the public understands what the question is for the vote tonight. Again, we've taken this in small steps. As I understand it, and for those in the administration, please correct me if I misspeak, but we accepted this Making Proud Choices grant from the federal government to be initiated as an after-school voluntary program for students and with parental permission to come in after school. We had, as reported to us, excellent reception by those people who took part in that course as it stood initially by the federal grant writers. And we, in keeping with the requirements of the North Carolina state law, to try to find a program that would support the public instruction of these students during the public school hours in their ninth-grade health education curriculum, we began looking at this program as an option that would be taught during the day in the public schools, again, with public permission, I mean, with parental permission, one way or another. As we received debate, heard debate, received some information from the public that told us, as a board and as an administration, that this program, as it was written, was not acceptable and was not appropriate for all our students, we then, in the process of evaluating this and trying to be financially responsible to the community, I know we've heard one side about these grants tonight, it's another side when we go to our county commissioners about funding. side when we go to our county commissioners about funding, when we are a grossly underfunded school district in this state, that we are trying to be conservative and fiscally responsive with our resources. So we were looking at this program as a way to possibly meet the requirements of North Carolina State law while at the same time making it as financially feasible as we could. So we then asked the task force to look at this program and see are there changes that can be made that would make it presentable and acceptable to teach our students in the classroom. So now that the task force is ready to give us their report, and we've heard individual comments from several members representative of that task force, but before we hear their report, I want to clarify the question for us tonight is, the question, as I understand it from last week's discussion, is we are voting on whether or not to send these revisions as recommended from the task force back to our grant department in the federal government to see if, if they will approve the continuation of operating, our operating under this grant with these changes to the curriculum. So I think our, our question is simple tonight. It's are we prepared to and satisfied enough with this program to send it back to the federal government to see if they will even approve that we teach it? And then it will be a separate decision as to whether we do actually teach it or whether we look at other options. Am I correct in that, Ms. Rogers?
Yes, you are, Dr. Cash and members of the board. I do want to also clarify, since the Cal meeting last week, I have been in contact with my project officer and she assures me that it would meet sustainability requirements as written.
But our vote tonight, our decision tonight still is to allow you to send that for that formal-
For the formal approval, yes. But really, I would think that, to me, the vote tonight would be to vote that the board is in favor of having that program delivered during ninth grade health. And I think that it's just a formality to get a grant, federal office approval.
That's, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify the question because that, that's kind of was up in the air last week. So as I understand, our vote tonight, after we hear this presentation, will be both to send back to the federal government for final approval that this curriculum meets their guidelines and their standards to operate under the grant that we have received and that we, as a board, approve the implementation of the teaching of this program in our ninth grade health classes. Correct? Okay. All right. Is that understood? Any board members have questions before we hear the report? Okay. All right. Well, I'll turn it over then to the task force representatives to make your report to us then. Thank you.
This is going to be a little repetitive for you guys because you heard it last week. But we just want to make sure you know everything that we're focusing on. My name is Alyssa Johnson.
And my name is Chuck Campbell.
We're here representing the task force that has been working on revising the health curriculum for Iredell County. The title of our curriculum is Making Responsible Life Choices. Additional to Chuck and I, we are Lori Gray, Kim Clover, William Wooton, Stephanie Alsah, Doug Holland, Susan Johnson, Darla Klein, Stephanie Clark, Cindy Haynes, and Kristy Boring. So our objective was to review the Making Proud Choices curriculum and the requirements of the NC State law and determine if modifications were necessary for the curriculum.
We need a forward. As everyone is aware, legislation was passed, House Bill 88 and the Health Youth Act of 2009. And all of us reviewed this act. We were handed that particular document. And that the changes made to the curriculum by the task force continue to meet the Health Bill 88 and the Health Youth Act of 2009.
Just to give some background, we are a social worker, a business owner, nurses, a student, a teacher, a school SAP, a parent educator, a supervisor, a minister, and a dairy farmer. Most members have children previously or currently in the school district. Some are from Stony Point, some from Statesville, Mooresville, Troutman, Olin, and Rowan County. And we all have very diverse racial backgrounds.
As has been, as was stated at our, at our prior meeting, we spent significant time reviewing the Making Proud Choices document. We actually reviewed word for word, line by line, listened to each video, attended a separate training that the students attended. So we committed considerable time in order to gain a good and a solid understanding of this curriculum. Estimated total time spent was 516 hours, 276 in training and curriculum evaluation, and then on our own time taking these documents home, which equated to a total of 64.58-hour days. And that's not including time presenting the recommendations to the Board of Education.
So we have a few things to emphasize, one of them being removing proud from the curriculum. We understood the meaning of proud in the curriculum. However, we felt that responsible was a more accurate representation of the curriculum that we came up with, hence making the new title, Making Responsible Life Choices. And we also wanted to emphasize that abstinence is the only 100% safe way.
We know that probably, well, not probably, but is, the most controversial piece of this whole curriculum deals with students who choose to have sex, teenagers. And with that, we felt that it was necessary to remove the condom demonstration that included a video and also a teaching with props that was included in this demonstration. However, we, as we all know, these things are happening with our children. The reason that we qualified for the grant is because we qualified based on the numbers that are occurring in our county. We have 20 children, children that are pregnant now in our schools. That's one too many, child, as, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm quite sure with all of you. And that's a reality of what's taking place. So I want, I want to emphasize that. Our emphasis is on abstinence. Abstinence and sex taking place when a man and a woman gets married and there's a family unit. That's the one thing that we all agreed upon, 100%. But also, we also all agreed, except for, and those that they can state if they did or not, that we do understand that this is the real world and this is happening. The reason why I joined the task force, and I'm a minister who has preached abstinence in my Sunday School class, and that is what is taught by God, that is what I believe personally. But I also saw that take place in my Sunday School class. I want you to understand this. When teenage children and girls get pregnant, it moves them into a whole nother area in their life. This also leads to poverty. It leads to just all of those broken dreams and, and including the boys. So we understand how sensitive that this matter is. And the other thing that we also understand is that the school or the state or the government has no right to tell any parent what type of class they should take. That's why parental consent is a part of this program. I would have never been involved in this program if parental consent was not a part of it. So that right has not been eliminated. In addition, the other thing that we want to understand is that in no way, form, or fashion are we teaching a Planned Parenthood class or doing family planning. There's no section in there about abortion being a, a option after pregnancy, abortion pill, or anything of that nature. That is not a part of what this program is. And I know I'm going a little off script, but I just want to, I think this is important. The mission of the Iredell County's school system is to rigorously challenge our students to achieve academic, please hold, potential and to lead productive and rewarding lives. The first part of this whole teaching deals with setting goals, lifelong goals, looking at yourself and making choices and preserving those goals out front. The whole issue of sex is an adult issue. It really is. But unfortunately, teenagers are involving themselves in an adult situation and then the adult things are happening, pregnancy, disease, and HIV. So with that, if you could go back, please, we made sure that we eliminated explicit sections of wording in, in the teaching and in the videos, that we wanted it to be diverse, to be culturally diverse, which is representative of our population. And then also, we wanted to make sure that it was age-appropriate. We took this very seriously, very, very seriously. And we had arguments over it, but there was a consensus that was there. So I had to give in on some things that I was strong about and some other people did. But we, but this is a better product. Is it a perfect product? And I will say this, you will not find one. You will not find a perfect product out there. It does not exist. Move forward. So one of our members, we came up with this statement that we wanted to share. It says, "As young adults, you're beginning to make serious decisions about your life. When to become sexually active is a serious decision and one that we will have an impact on you for the rest of your life." We clearly understand that.
We have some additional requests from our task force. One is to put their curriculum on the ISS website for the parents to view. Obviously, there are a lot of concerns from parents about the curriculum. They're wanting to see it, they're wanting to review it, and so we definitely want that to be available. Also, we would like to include the opt-out request information in the orientation packet for future open houses. Since parents are often present at the open houses, sometimes that's the only time you can get parents to come to the schools. And also give parents access to the opt-out request form and curriculum outline on the ISS website with a follow-up call from a staff member to the parent to confirm the request to opt out.
I, I think she pretty much covered the opt-out and the choice. That's the parental consent. Again, the state, the school is not attempting in no form or fashion to take away the parent's ability or decision or right for their child not to be taught this curriculum. And then with that, to utilize the connected calls to inform parents, so with technology. And, and also, we, Superintendent Brady is, I believe, is commit, will commit his staff to make sure that these follow-ups and these things are done in order for that each, each student who may or may not take this course, that their parents are fully aware of the other curriculum and that also that, that the parent needs to be in consent with this. Some discussions that went kind of back and forth, as like I said, when I, when I attended the live teaching of this course, there was a male and a female that taught it. I thought it was very effective. I thought, and again, this is my own personal opinion, and I don't want to speak for other members, but I, I think that this curriculum was a very educational curriculum and that it was evidence-based and that it was really good. And what I saw is that the students were engaged, they were learning, and I think that they had more knowledge before they went into that teaching than, than when they had not had it. So, but with that also, we do, we do see that sometimes boys and girls, and because of their young age, some of these things that are discussed that it relates to sex, and we all get a little shy, even when you say the word sex, people have a tendency to, for whatever reason, may not necessarily be comfortable with it. We believe that separating the boys and girls would probably be better and also it might make it more comfortable for some teachers who may not necessarily be comfortable with presenting to the opposite sex. In addition, we have specialists throughout the schools who teach various courses, math, science. We also believe as, as a suggestion that a mobile specialist who is an expert in this subject would probably, well, not probably, but would do a very good job of being able to teach this, and then that would help with standardizing the teaching. But we also feel that with the script and proper teaching within the school system that that may also be sufficient. And then finally, all of this is based on statistics. This isn't something that we're just make, basing these recommendations based on our own personal feelings. This is data. It's factual, from the state, from the county, from the Senator of Disease Control. These are health statistics that we use and that we reviewed in, in looking at this curriculum.
So our overall recommendation is that we request the implementation of the revised curriculum as presented in hard copy in August of 2014. And before we end, I, as, as people were talking and during this whole meeting, I've been jotting down notes, so bear with me if this is kind of all over the place, but there are some things I wanted to say. First of all, I attended the PARC class as a student. I took it with other students. I didn't attend it with the other members of the task force. It was just a normal PARC class for me. It was probably the most enjoyable sex ed class I've ever taken. It was fun. It was relatable. There were kids that came into the class with their hoods up, just wanting the $100. They didn't care about the curriculum. And by the end of the class, they were engaged, they were involved, they were excited about it. Obviously, we've taken out a lot of the more inappropriate parts of the curriculum or things that aren't age-appropriate, but it's very relatable and it's, it's almost enjoyable for kids to take. And that's not something that you hear from students during a school day, is that a class was enjoyable. Another thing I wanted to address is that I'm in the International Baccalaureate Program and something that we focus on is being open-minded to other cultures. Obviously, most of the people in this room believe in the Bible. We believe in abstinence. We want to follow the Bible, but there are a lot of people in this district who don't. And I don't think that it's fair for us to force a biblically, mainly biblically, biblically idea on students who don't believe in the Bible. I have friends who, who don't believe in the Bible. Now, they believe in abstinence too, but we can't focus on the fact that we want to focus on the Bible. Another thing is that all of the information in this curriculum is medically accurate. It's education. It's not just something that we're throwing at these students. I know there was a concern from one of the speakers about it not being education, but it, it is education. It's accurate information. Let's see. Another thing, it was mentioned that we look at more options, or you guys look at more options for the curriculum. But by the time you do that, it's going to be time for the teachers to teach the students this curriculum. So what are you going to do? You have this curriculum in front of you that a group of people from the community, a very diverse people, group of people from the community got together and came up with. So why not try it out? That's kind of your only option right now, because you guys already have a lot of other things on your plate. This article, we're all very upset about it. We are extremely upset about it. It's inaccurate, it's inappropriate, and it's a horrible representation of the work that we did over the summer. Each task force member that attended these meetings had every opportunity to share their opinions. We even sat in moments of silence sometimes, waiting for someone to say something that they wanted to change about the curriculum, and no one said anything, so we moved on. This video, this part of the video that's being shown in this article was removed from the curriculum. So we were very upset that it was inaccurate. the curriculum, so we were very upset that it was inaccurate. I guess the last thing I have to say, it's more of a question for you guys. How many teen pregnancies do you think you're going to have in the district next year? And then if you do have teen pregnancies, which you will, are you going to think that you did everything you could to prevent those teen pregnancies? It's your job to take action and to help these students that aren't being helped. There are a lot of them that aren't being helped at home. And so, like I said at the last meeting, it's your job as the school board members to take action. That's it.
In closing, one, we could not have done this without this young lady here, because, as I said at our other meeting, the majority of our members are very dated, and we had an actual student to come in. I would also pose a question, that if you were to take a survey in your school of the students and not let them say who they are, their names, and ask them if they wanted to be educated about this subject, I bet, I would wonder what type of response you would get from that. They want to know about this. That's, the bottom line is that they want to know, but not only do they want to know, they're going to places to get it. And the places where they're going, they're not getting the truth, and they're not getting accurate information. And I want to say to those parents, I applaud you for those that have the dreaded talk with your child, because it's the dreaded talk. Where do babies come from? The sex talk. I had to have that talk with my son. I raised my son outside of my home, only saw him two months out of the year, because I was divorced. At the time, he was eight. And I sat him down, and I gave him the truth biblically, and I also gave him the truth about just being responsible and waiting, and that he would be rewarded if he waited when he could run, have his own home, have a job, have a wife, and take care of those kids, because I was not going to do that. And my son waited, he got married, I have four grandchildren, and I'm saying, and I'm, but I'm not giving it to my credit, it was his. Did that talk work? Maybe it did. I think it went in, but he still had to face his peers. He was a basketball player. I know that there was a lot of things that he came across, and there was a year where he spent by himself at a private school out of state, at a Christian school, thank God, but still, those things are still there. And I don't envy any of you that have to vote on this at this time, because you're in a no-win position to a certain extent, because there's not a perfect solution to this. But I do applaud you for, and the state, for seeing that this is a problem that is in our country, it's a rising one, with everything that's pushed through us, through the media, which has a First Amendment right to push things at us, and we can't shut it down, and that you are willing to educate our children about health, reproduction, and safety, not about, this is how you have sex. That's not what this class is about. It's about abstinence, it's 100% safe, and it's about that if you choose to do the other thing, you open up this risk of teenage pregnancy, disease, that you may or may not be able to get rid of, and that you also change the course of your life. So I want to thank you all again for allowing us to participate, and I want to thank those who took the time to do that, because every person in the community had the opportunity to participate, because no one was not allowed to be on this committee. Thank you for your time.
Before we open for discussion, I would like to recognize those members that served on the task force and dedicated so much of your lives and your time this summer to that program. Could I have those who participate in the task force, please stand?
Thank you all for your participation and help us with recommendations for the governance of our system. To help maybe facilitate this discussion along a little bit, I will, I'll go ahead and, I know we heard the comments last week, the recommendations from the task force, and we appreciate you presenting those again for our review, and for those members of the public who didn't hear it last week. The board did have some discussion while you were there with us, particularly about how students would participate, specifically whether this would be an opt-in or an opt-out program. And I think the consensus of the board, after we discussed to that point, and again, it's all up for discussion tonight among our members, but just to, to bring the public up to speed on our discussion so far, we felt that maybe the opt-in option would be more of a choice, it would be more of an active choice for those parents to make, so that the parents would have a greater sense of a say in whether their children participated in this program or not. So I think that's the only thing that I remember from our discussion at that point, as we left last week, getting ready to come and present this today, as well as the information Ms. Rogers brought forth earlier, that she has spoken with the federal department that made this grant to us, and felt like these changes that y'all did would be acceptable to them. So at this point, I'm going to be quiet a minute, and we'll ask for comments or any discussion, or if a member is ready to make a motion regarding this recommendation to us tonight, we'll entertain that motion at any time as well. I'll open the floor for discussion.
Can I ask a question of Ms. Rogers? The, the discussion about the morning-after pill, is that still in the curriculum as, as a means of contraception?
It is on the FDA-approved list of contraception, but it is not specifically mentioned in the making, in the Making Responsible Life Choices curriculum.
The committee had a recommendation that you employ a mobile specialist, but my understanding is you are not going to take that recommendation. Is that correct?
If the board wanted to allocate funds for that, that would be fine, but I do feel like our present health educators at the high school level, with continued training, with the training they've already received, would do a very, very good job.
So you're comfortable with that?
I'm very comfortable with that.
Another one of the, you know, stipulations that, that I feel is very important, you know, in the opt-in, is, you know, can, can the information be found easily on not only the ISS website, but each high school website? You know, sometimes trying to navigate through the, you know, information can be a little more than difficult, so, you know, I, I would really appreciate it in the opt, I mean, in the opt-in, that there is a link, you know, and that there is a walkthrough on how to find this information on the website.
We could definitely do that. That would be no problem. We're always trying to be as transparent as possible, and once we come up with the form, we'll make sure that not only all of our health educators have a copy, but that it is online, and that when they send out their high, health syllabus, that will be also a part of it.
You know, I, I will just tell you, I've probably done more hand-wringing and praying about this, you know, than I probably need to, you know, because I did talk to my youth minister last week, and I gave him the curriculum. I said, you know, "Please look over this and tell me, you know, what you think," and, you know, and like me, I mean, there are things in there that don't set well, you know, you look at it and you go, "I don't want my ninth grader knowing about this." You know, is it too much information for, for some kids? Yes, definitely. You know, is it not enough information for some kids? Yes, I think so. You know, I think the biggest deficiency that I see in, in the curriculum is there's not enough emphasis, you know, and, and my pastor helped me to understand too. Abstinence, you know, is a choice, but it's the right choice, just as, you know, not drinking until you're 21 is the right choice, or not, or, you know, eating your fruits and vegetables and your lean meat is a right choice. You know, the, the consequences of not making a right choice are, you know, DWIs, you know, killing a friend, you know, in a car accident, or, you know, heart attacks and high cholesterol and that sort of thing. And I think, you know, the emphasis needs to be more on making the right choice, but however, we know that kids are going to make bad decisions. And, and he felt, as did I, that the, the written-out curriculum is a good thing, you know, and it gives very basic information. You know, like I said, there's, there's some information in there that we both are, you know, I mean, they make you blush. You know, but, but in making the right choice, I mean, there are physiological and psychological changes that happen to anyone who has sex, let alone a teenager who's not prepared, you know, for the, for the consequences that will happen, and I think that that is a huge gap, you know, in this curriculum. I, I just think that, that kids, when they make, when they make the right choice, they won't have the emotional scars, hopefully, that, that the kids that, that decide that they're going to have sex do. I did pull up some information, I, I just was curious, you know, what are the consequences? You know, I know sexual, you know, I suspected, but I didn't know, but there are some statistics that say that sexually active kids are more likely to be depressed and attempt suicide, you know, and, and there are stats that say that the incidences of a contraception, you know, like the pill, even though it doesn't protect, even though it doesn't protect for STDs or HIV, is not as, it doesn't work as well in this age group as it would in an adult age group, and may, and those stats are not in there as well. You know, if there's, like I said, I think that there's a big gap. Is this the best curriculum? Is this the only curriculum? No, it's not the best. Is it the only curriculum out there? No, it's not the only one out there. You know, I, I really am struggling with, with how to vote on this.
One of the videos is a special birth control video, and it goes into all of the requirements of the Healthy Youth Act for the exact success and failure rate, and you're totally right about the birth control pill, because it has to be taken every day at the same time, and teenagers can't sometimes remember, you know, to bring a pencil to school, so they might not remember to take their birth control at the same time every day. But we do have, one of the videos is called "The Facts About Birth Control," and it goes into detail that some, many of those things that you mentioned.
I, I think that, you know, when you send the, the opt-in sheet to the, to the parents, you know, it does need to outline that this is very graphic, that there's graphic nature, you know, in the, in the, in the presentation, you know, things that, that...
Our plan is to do a very detailed synopsis of each of the lessons, and then have it available for further scrutiny by the parents. Our goal, as in the, our other opt-out, was to have that at least 10 days before any curriculum began, and we can also extend that if necessary.
And, and I also want to, you know, clarify, I suppose if we vote yes tonight, then the training for this curriculum will go full throttle. I mean, from here on out, it's, it's what the board pleases, and any vote that we have tonight will, will mean that we're going to give them our stamp of approval, and that we are going to go in this direction as far as our sex ed curriculum.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, rather than use the term "opt-in," if we go that route, it would probably be better to say a signed permission form in the motion.
All right.
Let me go back to the question Mr. Page asked earlier. Did you say that the professional to go to each school is not necessary? You're going to use...
I do not believe so.
You have the health professional in the classroom already, so we wouldn't have to expend any funds on that idea. And also, when you ask that the males and the females, the girls and the boys be separated, and you're talking about a ninth-grade health class, I'm not sure that that can be done effectively. You would, you would end up teaching the same thing twice if you did that with the same person. That's just an overload for the teacher.
I believe that that is going to have to be a site-based decision. I know one of our high schools does separate, the others do not, but we would definitely give that, the principals the option if they could work that into the schedule, if they felt that that was appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
First, I want to thank each person on the task force. It was quite a commitment. I've learned so much from each one of you. I appreciate your passion and desire to make Iredell Statesville Schools a better school system, so thank you. The Iredell Statesville Schools is a microcosm of various beliefs and values stemming from the families who send their children, our students, to, to our schools. Educators are trained to teach in an objective manner, not placing his or her values onto the student, but teaching the facts. It is my belief educators are trained to teach without bias, in an objective and neutral manner. In regards to the sexual health curriculum via the leadership of Linda Rogers, the Making Proud Choices curriculum is in no way an objective curriculum, even with the task force's modifications and recommendations. Parents and legal guardians have the ultimate responsibility for their children. Iredell Statesville Schools should respect that concept. I encourage all parents or legal guardians to make an informed decision for their seventh, eighth, or ninth grader who will be taught sexual health in Iredell Statesville Schools. There has, there has to be some accountability for administrative decisions, such as curriculum selection, or cutting ties with a community partner, such as Pregnancy Resource Center. From this day forward, I'm holding Ms. Rogers accountable for any curriculum that she places in the classroom. I'm also holding Dr. Melanie Taylor, who is over curriculum and instruction, Mr. Richard Armstrong, because on the chain of authority, Ms. Rogers falls under yours, and the superintendent, Brady Johnson, accountable for Ms. Rogers' decisions as well. I conclude with this: I will only support, I will support the implementation of the modified Making Proud Choice curriculum only, if it's required to have written permission from the student's parents or the student's legal guardians, which I call an opt-in curriculum. Thank you.
James, would you like to, to make that last statement as your motion?
I can go.
No, I think that covers the question we had for us tonight. So she has made this as a motion to, to implement the, let me make sure I say it correctly, or do you want to repeat it? The motion is to approve the implementation of the modified Making Proud Choices curriculum only if it's required to have written permission from the student's parents or legal guardians, which we have referred to as an opt-in curriculum.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I, I will be opposed, but only, like I said, I mean, I think there's a lot of good and bad on this, but only as a challenge that, that we do relook at this curriculum and see if we can make it better for next year, for the 15, 16 year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wong. That vote then carries 6-1. Thank you again for all the support that you gave us from the public on this task force. Okay, we'll move next to item B, the 2014-15 budget resolution, Ms. Melissa Wyke, and this is also a voting item. this is also a voting item.
Good evening. I have before you the 2014-15 budget resolution. We discussed this in depth at the Cal meeting last Monday. The memo kind of points out the highlights of the budget. It's 182,800,000 in total. It, it does reflect an increase in state funding of approximately 5.4 million. The increase in state funding is to cover the cost of the raises that the state approved during this budget cycle. It is actually net of some decrease in funding. We did have a decrease of 1.1 million in teacher assistant funding. Our local current expense appropriation from Aragro County increased 942,000, or $55 per pupil, and the county capital outlay appropriation increased by 25% or 615,000, and that is already net of the $600,000 that the county is withholding for the school system to make future technology purchases. The state budget that's reflected in the resolution has already been reduced by what we, were reduced by the state for students that have gone to new or expanded growth in existing charter schools. The initial budget proposes to use 138,000 in capital outlay fund balance, which would leave an estimated 1.6 million available at the end of this fiscal year, and the local current expense budget proposes to use 444,000 in fund balance that would result in an estimated 6.2 million in available fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
You, let me just make a comment. You, you clarified at the meeting that we had last week, the resolution reflects an increase in state funding of approximately 5.4 million. You clarified the idea that we don't have 5.4 million more dollars to spend. I just want to, I hate to clarify that. I wish that were true, but it isn't. It's just that with the raises and everything that goes with it, the budget went up that much. Is that correct?
That's correct. Just in simple terms, it, it costs more to pay the same number of employees this year than it did last year. And like it says in the memo here, we actually lost funding in the teacher assistant allotment, so that 5.4 million increase is a net of more funding for raises, less deductions for teacher assistance.
Ms. White, there was some talk that we could possibly get some more money from the county. What's the latest on that?
You'll have to ask Mr. Johnson. I have not had any discussions with the county about that.
Yeah, we haven't followed up on that since summer with the county. We obviously did not get the full request that we took to the county commissioners, but they did leave the caveat that they would reexamine our budget later in the fall to see if they would be able, I think it's approximately $150,000. So we should hear from them later in the fall.
Okay, I didn't know what the amount was. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion that we approve the budget resolution as written.
I'll make that motion, that we approve this budget resolution as it is written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the board attorney contract, item C. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Dr. Cash, members of the board, before you, you have a draft copy of a new contract from Mr. McMillan. We had an extensive discussion about legal services last Tuesday night at your Cal meeting. You've had several days now to take a look at this contract that's before you, and I'm sure that myself or Mr. McMillan will be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the board contract as given to us tonight.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the attorney contract as presented. Is there any discussion?
Thank Mr. McMillan for what he's been doing for us. Thank you.
No other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Again, we do appreciate Mr. McMillan's work for the board over the past years, and look forward to continued representation with us. Next, we will move on down to item E, the Youth Hunter Safety Skills Team Final Report and Recommendations. Again, this is a voting item. Ms. Armstrong?
Good evening, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. Three of our schools, North Ardell High School, North Ardell Middle School, and West Ardell High School, have decided to field a youth hunter skills teams this year. They've all secured coaches for their respective teams. They have a nominal fee for students to pay, especially for supplies or team T-shirts, and they will concentrate mostly on doing their fundraising, well, raising funds through fundraising activities, to take a burden off of students and their parents. And the practice for these teams will begin late September, early October. So I'm asking the board tonight to accept this final recommendation.
I make the motion we accept. I second that motion. I have a second up here with Ms. Hanes already, so, yeah, she was right on the draw. Is there any, we have a motion and a second in favor of approving the Youth Hunter Safety Skills Team as recommended to us. Is there any discussion?
No, just like to recognize our guard members back here with us tonight in support of that, and thank you for your help and support in getting us hunter safety going. He's with us tonight.
Thank you.
Sergeant.
No other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
The motion is approved unanimously. Next, we'll move on to superintendent comments. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just wondered if we wanted to do the closed session before his comments, but that's up to...
It's up to the board. You would like to hold those?
I, okay.
Okay, well, we'll...
Okay.
Entertaining a motion to move into closed session, would you like to do that, Mr. Page?
Oh, no, I don't understand.
To discuss personnel issues.
Replacing Bill with me, huh? According to, I move that we move into closed session according to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11. I make the motion that the board enters into closed session to discuss personnel issues. Discuss qualifications of potential employees. Are we doing any property?
Okay.
That's it.
Do we have a motion, is there a second? Second. Have a motion and a second to go into closed session to discuss these personnel issues and pending contracts. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. We will return and have a formal vote after this discussion of personnel issues. For those who would like to wait on us, if not, we certainly appreciate your attendance tonight and all the work that you've done on behalf of our school system.